Good morning, everyone. Today's date is June 8th, 2020. First item on our agenda is Pledge of Allegiance and our implication to be led by Commissioner Martinez. So if you would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you so much, dear Lord, that you give us another day of life, dear Lord. Dear Lord, a chance to go and do, dear Lord, what we know we need to do as leaders and as Christian people, dear Lord. Dear Lord, I ask that you be with this big, great country of ours, dear Lord, that you wrap your arms around it, dear Lord, just embrace it, dear Lord, and spread the love as right now we're having some difficult times right now, dear Lord, not only the country but this whole world. Dear Lord, I ask that you send a blessing on it, dear Lord. Dear Lord, I pray for all of the military people, dear Lord, all the first responders, dear Lord, as they put their lives on the line every day for us, dear Lord. I ask that you be with them and their families, dear Lord. Dear Lord, I ask that you be with us this morning as we make decisions that are good for the people of this county, dear Lord. I ask that you give us the knowledge, dear Lord, that we do the right thing in your eyes, dear Lord. Again, we thank you for all the blessings that you give us, dear Lord, for our times I know that we take for granted, dear Lord, especially our freedom. Dear Lord, thank you for Hell County, dear Lord. We're not seeing what we're seeing in the other parts of this country, dear Lord. I'm so thankful for that. Again, dear Lord, we thank you, dear Lord, we love you, dear Lord, and we ask that you please forgive us for failure and use them in prayer. Amen.
All right, I'd like to welcome everyone here this morning. We'll start out by approving our minutes over previous meetings for the meeting, regular meeting of May 26, 2020, special meetings of May 22, 2020, and May 29 of 2020. Y'all have a chance to look over those minutes. Do I hear a motion that we approve those as written?
I made a good motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Cornell. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Martinez. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Next item on our agenda is the audit report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The only thing I have this morning is for the court to approve the 2021 budget calendar. And I gave all of you a copy back on Friday. You have a chance to look at it and you have any questions?
Any questions on the budget calendar? Do I hear a motion that we approve the budget calendar as written? Soul blue. Motion made by Commissioner King. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item is our treasures report.
I don't have anything to do with it.
All right. I want to skip my items. I've got a number of them and some of them are going to take a little time, so. Next item would be our county attorney.
Good morning.
That number I have?
It's thirty-four thousand something a year.
Thirty-four something.
I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared, but the pay group nine is at thirty-four thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollars and fourteen cents. Biweekly amount is one thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and twelve cents.
Thank you.
I apologize, I thought I had that in my stack goodness here, but.
All right, you've heard the request from the Kelly attorney on the hiring.
Because I believe Seth Ward is part of Plamey. Regardless of how many times people travel out there, goes to help people out there. I'm getting older and can't volunteer so much. But I did call, we are not on the trash service as Plamey is, we are with some planes waste. So I called them to see how we could provide, like Plamey has a lonnetub. Well, they'll charge a hundred fifty dollars to bring a truck out, then three hundred dollars after that, and then they charge you by the waste, the weight of the waste. So you're looking at about five or six hundred dollars just to bring out a truck to clean up your property. How many people can afford that to live out there? So I'm asking for assistance in some kind of program, some kind of service that can help Seth Ward. A lot of them are willing to clean up.
There's certain things that we can put in those dumpsters because they're going to haul them to the city landfill. There's certain things that you can't. You have to break it down and do all that. I am talking to TCEQ about all of that. We'll figure something out.
Diane, you're just proposing that we get some trucks or dumpsters or whatever just there and then so people can clean up their property.
Yes, kind of like the Plamey lonnetub program. I've called the city, we're not allowed to use them out there.
Diane, I want to say while we're here, I want to thank you for your efforts and what you do. I've watched you over the years, you work hard trying to make Seth Ward a better place to live. If we had a few more people that would take as much interest in it as you have, it'd be a totally different place. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
The few that, the one out there, the few are the ones that asked to make it. Well, R G that works for Idaho and D M, those families, the trash and all that. Not keeping most things clean out there, but. There's some, most of them don't.
What are we considering on this?
We're just discussing it right now.
Okay.
We'll figure some more stuff out and then we'll bring it back.
Okay. I think there's probably a way, you work with the regulatory agency and see, but I think there's probably a way we could provide the dumpsters. I'm just speaking, you know, I think that's something we could do and so, and something we'd be willing to do.
Thanks.
So there'll be no action on that item today. We'll research that and Ms. Martinez, we'll be in touch with you when we're able to provide that dumpster service out there. Like I say, maybe do it periodically, like you were saying. Of course, we'll provide it and if they use it, then it would be to all of our benefit to continue to do it, so.
I'd be delighted to take flyers, brochures, and translate them in Spanish, let them know when you're going to have it.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, Harold.
My next agenda item is Kevin Igoe and the Parade of Breeds.
All right.
Good morning, guys.
Good morning.
I was anxious when you set the agenda and said the Pledge of Allegiance. I thought we were going to get to sing the national anthem afterward, but missed that part of it, so. But no, Harold called a couple of weeks ago on the Parade of Breeds. Me and Michael Dawson, Michael will speak here in just a second about what we're going to do to possibly, what were our best efforts on trying to stay within the guidelines of the state of Texas and the federal government on the spread of the coronavirus. It has definitely been a concern of ours, a lot of anxious nights trying to figure out, you know, would we be allowed by the state of Texas and stuff like that? So, but I just wanted to share with you guys how much we appreciate the cooperation between the commissioners and the Parade of Breeds since nineteen eighty-three consistently since nineteen eighty-three. And that is, it is an economic driver for this county. For we consistently have four to four hundred and fifty entries in that event. Four years ago, we made it a Saturday-only show because it always was such a weekend. And we made an executive decision, a lot of people, it never changed our numbers, but people always said, man, we'd like to spend Sunday with our fathers. And we are spending them with them at the Parade of Breeds, but we'd like to be at home. So we listened to our people that were coming and we get it all done on Saturdays now, Friday night and Saturdays. It is, our hotels are full, the businesses, the restaurants are supported. But we, as a nonprofit organization, have consistently put money into the improvements of the Ollie Liner Center through pens that are used to the Hell County Stock Show, through pig auctions, different things, helped with wash racks, lighting, and things of that nature. So it's, the money all goes back to the kids, the money all stays in the facility. So it's not like we're being leeches or things of that nature. I think we're very judicious. There are two board members that originally began with Parade of Breeds that are still on the board today. And it's a very consistent board. The thing I'm proudest of that board is that we have, we continually bring parents in whose children are showing so that they have input on how better to serve their children. It is a first-class facility. I know in two weeks when the Parade of Breeds begins, the following week, there's one in Levelland that is at their facility, and their facility handle even more cattle than ours. The following week, there will be one in Abilene, and the following week from there will be one down, I'm going to say, in College Station. So I'm glad that the governor has allowed us to start doing this again. It is exciting for us to get to see these different families that we see on an annual basis. We are, we, because of the setting up time and the amount of time that Benny has to help do that this year and the lack of use of trustees from the prison, we've had three workdays so far in which volunteers from the Parade of Breeds came up and rolled out mats and smoothed the sand and different things of that nature and got it done very timely. Used a lot of the young kids that will be showing and that's what the Parade of Breeds is about, is teaching our young people work ethics. Hopefully, they come back to be tax-paying citizens and aren't going to be our problem juvenile delinquents that we lot of money on as well. So I appreciate Harold, Jimmy, all you commissioners, Kenny, for y'all's help in providing equipment, providing man hours that help. Some of the kids can't lift as much, some of those guys are getting older and can't lift as much, and so I appreciate that. A question that was asked by Mary Bass, who was one of the original board members, and I guess it's directed more towards Jimmy, but I know when Benny was a commissioner, we had a, I don't know exactly, Mary was telling me, but Benny would lease a machine that would sift the manure from the sand so that we could use that sand again. Mary was asking me Friday or Saturday about that and I said, I didn't even know they had that, so I'm asking.
We did it one year.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know if it was cost.
Yeah, we had to go pick it up down in the metroplex area.
Does it work? I mean, is it something that we can use again?
We have to call the guy and see if we can run down there and pick it up and send it.
Mary just acted like it was a benefit to the county and everything else, so I just, she asked what our status was and I said, I have no idea.
We got into that because now we're having a hard time finding that sand. The guy that we used to get it from over at the cop center saw that place and whoever bought it, sell the sands. So that's where that machine came from. Do you found it somewhere down in the metroplex area?
Okay, well, if, the rings are set up, I think they're going to hang banners one day this week and to promote the sponsors of that field. So I guess my part is to thank you guys for all the work that you guys have helped us. And we will hopefully next year have trustees available to help. But until then, we've done well. I'm going to let Michael talk about some of the protocol that we've done to help prevent the spread of the virus through that organization.
Kevin, there was actually a show this past week in Belton, is that right?
There is usually one, but I just, I don't know, Kenny. Our focus is there right now, but yeah, I know the, I know the governor has opened it up to where we can do that.
I knew some folks that went out, so they did.
The Angus Association or something had something on there, and you're exactly right, Kenny. Any other questions for me?
All right.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, we're just going to mention some of the things we're going to do to try to make sure that we follow as many protocols, follow the state's protocols as we're putting on. We're going to, we've done, almost all the entries are going to be online this year, so there's not going to be a line, people doing entries when they're getting there at it. And if they do, we are going to have a few people that are still going to do that, but we're going to have them spaced apart. We're going to have hand sanitizing stations all throughout the barn, at the bleachers, and as you come in and at all the entrances and exits of the place. We're also going to plan on having in the stands, you know, we're going to ask people, we're going to put up signs saying, if you arrived as a group, you can stay as a group, you know, if you're a family, you can stay as a family. We'd like to keep families and groups to maintain social distance. There's kind of a tradition, kids shake the judges' hands afterwards and they shake each other. We're going to, that's not going to, we're going to, you know, not allow that this year. We're not going to have those things, kind of things going on. And the cattle are spaced out, they spaced out about six feet apart, I mean, they're about that long. That's not going to, you know, they're walking in their head to tail. They're pretty well naturally spaced six feet apart and we're going to make sure that we keep that. Whenever they're being lined up and all that, we're going to try to do all we can with that. So that's kind of our, kind of our plans. If y'all think of anything else that you'd like for us to do with it, just let us know. I mean, we can, we can. And the food, we have a, we'll have a, Abernathy is going to do a concession stand at it and they're going to follow all the new health guidelines with the concession stand at it. So we've got, if there's any other questions about it or something we forget, just let us know and we'll sure work on that. And we do appreciate all the help. Golly, I tell you what, all the equipment and Benny and everybody working out at Ollie Liner Center has been really good. It has been really good. We have, we've enjoyed a lot of, a lot of help with it and this year we got to do a little bit extra on it and probably made us appreciate the help that we've had even more.
Any question?
The only thing I would think is we'll post this out there like the standard notice, you know, please don't enter if you feel sick or anything like that. It might even have some of the information for y'all to pass out to the entrants, you know, just so they're aware of it.
Yeah, that would be good.
I don't know who's been around that's not aware of that, but just to have it covered, so. Jim, Jim had called when I got back from court Friday and anyway, Jim, do you see any issues or anything we need them to do besides what they're doing?
Judge, I don't. The governor's last order from June 3rd says there's no occupancy limit on recreational sports programs, which I would kind of listen to and I'd be hard pressed to say. Having something like this in a big facility like the Ollie Liner Center would be worse than having, you know, a basketball tournament where you've got a lot more inspiration going on in a lot smaller facility, so.
Okay.
I think it's fine, I believe the governor's orders.
All right. Well, Mike, thanks for precautions and the work that y'all done. Any questions among the court? Do we need to take any action here?
I don't think, I don't think you're able, this is just a, with all the work we're doing and how we're going to handle it.
Appreciate all y'all's work.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
All right, next item on the agenda is Commissioner Precinct Ford.
All right, on the first item I had, I just asked him for permission to put these items on the auction. Be vehicles and things like that, so I just asked him for permission to do that this time.
So you're making a motion?
Making a motion to allow us to.
To auction those items off?
Yes.
Do you have a take, Kenny?
Uh, yeah.
Question that we allow Commissioner Precinct Ford to auction off items on Long Star Auction. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Martinez. Any discussion? Still don't know when it's going to be, Jimmy?
Yeah, I haven't set up, I was trying to get permission first, Mark.
Okay. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, and your second.
I'm going to, I want to table that until I have time to talk to Jim.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the district clerk. Also our executive director.
Okay, I had come to court two or three times ago, or two times ago, and asked to have screens put up on my counters. And I was going the Plexiglas route and when they came in, they just weren't, you know, of the highest quality and didn't look right. So, and then plus after seeing Latrice's in the county clerk's office, I had David Reed come and give me a proposal. And we had approved thirty-five, you guys had approved thirty-five for it and he with thirty-seven eighty-five and it's the glass, you know, with cutouts and everything. And so I'm asking that you approve the extra two eighty-five and make it payable to Reed's Glass instead of Amazon.
Okay. So do I hear a motion that we allow the district clerk to purchase Reed's Glass, the security, I don't want to call them screens, security glass, I guess that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, all right. And I would say let's give our amount, not to exceed four thousand dollars, just so if they get in there and need a little more money. Is that installation and everything, Carl?
Yes, library and all.
All right, have a motion that we allow this to be purchased from Reed's Glass, not to exceed four thousand dollars. Do we have a second? I'm sorry. Yeah, second by Harold.
Yes.
And Melinda is telling me to remind you that this will be paid for out of fund of labor. Any discussion on that? All right. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Okay, the next thing on my list was to, we had approved the internet being upgraded and then our contract for our phones came due and we kind of had a rough amount and now we have a really good amount thanks to the auditor's office. And so what, for the internet and the phone service, all three, and for all three accounts, which includes all, you know, the jail, this building, Justice Center, those guys over there, juvenile probation, no, yes, juvenile probation, it's forty-five hundred a month. And that's, we added a little bit, it's thirty, it comes out to thirty-eight seventy-nine, but they have all their little fees and those fees kind of depend on how much long distance or whatever we use. So Melinda had said to save forty-five hundred dollars a month and that's internet and phone service.
So that, that fee may go up and down.
We shouldn't go over forty-five, is what we figured.
Depends on type of call and all that kind of stuff.
Right. We just never know what those taxes are going to be, so that makes it fluctuate a little bit.
She heard the request to, for our updated phone and internet bill for a monthly fee of forty-five hundred. Do I hear a motion to approve that? I made that motion, motion made by Commissioner Martinez. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion? Is there a contract to be signed on that?
We already did on the last time.
Yeah, Jim, we did have that approved. Those contracts were approved when Carla brought the internet and they had included the phone service at that time, which we did not know.
Well, no, we did know because we knew our contract was running out and so they were just going to keep it the same.
Yeah.
But it kind of changed the.
It changed the, so. So do we need to ratify those or just?
Different amount?
Because we did, I mean, I did tell Carla we had to change the amount because it was different.
Well, I would think since you're going to do the amount today, it's probably good.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, we'll go back up to my items. On Friday, Mike is back with us today, but on Friday, Mike gave us his first quarter EDC report. Do I hear a motion that we approve the report that was submitted? Make that motion. Motion made by Commissioner Martin, I'm sorry, Commissioner Cornell. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kelly. Any discussion? Mike, do you have anything to add or?
Not at this time. Hopefully, we'll be having ribbon cutting for our business park in the not-too-distant future. I'll make everybody aware when that's going to be coming up, but when we can start having crowds gathered, we will probably, unless we were protesting out there, I guess we protest in terrible large crowds, I hope we don't have protests, but we'll let you know what the timeline on that is, so thank you for all that you do and.
Okay, I'll give everyone fair warning. I've got three resolutions to read today. Citizens of Hell County will ensure an accurate count of Hell County's population and its location. Whereas the Census Bureau offers both online and mail-in forms to allow citizens to complete their party. So COVID-19 has been recognized, but I'm going to skip because that may. And so I'm going to ask that we table it also because I found another thirty-six pages, like a chart and everything, and I provided the, what I provided to y'all on Friday. And so we haven't had much time to review. And the way I read this, we have until December of this year to make application, if we choose to make application. So there's not really a restraint. The one that I just read the resolution on, there's a time restraint, it has to be turned in by June 15th. And so I'll just table this up about next week. Okay, the EMS reports from Petersburg Transport. So they had twenty billable runs. They show a, for May 2020, they show total income of twenty thousand, six hundred and sixty-one point thirty-eight, total expenses of thirty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-one point nine three, for a difference of a negative eleven thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-five cents. Any questions about this report from Hell Center? Do I hear a motion that we approve that report?
We're going to make that motion, Jim.
Motion made by Martinez. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cornell. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The next item we have is germ blast. Mark is with us again today. We heard his presentation on Friday. So I'll turn it over. Does anyone have any, any discussion about germ blasts? Does anyone have a motion that we-
Could I get that question?
All right.
Did we include all of the buildings, Ollie Center, uh, across the street, the dump probation?
We did include across the street, I believe, all those, the probation and tax office and, and Deborah and them's office. And then we did not include the Ollie Liner Center.
What about juvenile?
Yes, he, that's how we got acquainted, he did juvenile, or he's gonna do juvenile, I guess, so.
What does everybody think of it? I was thinking over the weekend, I still think we're pretty much on the same side as far as contamination and all that. I don't know, I don't know, it's gonna make change my mind, but I don't know at this point, I'm not ready to spend that amount of money, just as long as I case, he doesn't, I can grow and everything. Don't give me y'all's two cents.
Well, based on the information we have now, Judge, I'm pretty much of the same opinion. I, I don't believe I'd be willing to, it is expensive, and I'm, I'm not sure that it would benefit us enough to do it at this time. I feel like it, it will continue to practice social distancing for, and for every building or every, every, so.
Okay.
You're sure of it?
Well, thank you.
You're free to do what you want to, as always, but that, the resolution I put in your box on Friday, the only thing really that's different than the last one is to change GA 23, which was the number of the last order from GA 26. And so, in my opinion, Judge, you've already read the resolution basically, so if you, and you're certainly free to read it again, but if you didn't want to, I can put that understanding, you'd be all right.
Okay, all right, so, uh, now that just as far, this was also readdressed-
Yes.
Uh, looking at, at our local situation, and we agreed last time that, uh, unless we have, uh, an outbreak here, uh, or arise in our cases, then, uh, we would go by what the governor was setting forth as our guidelines. And, uh, I'd say we should probably continue to do that. Now, as far as the local courthouse and the operation of the courthouse, we also talked Friday that we would discuss that today. Now, I will tell you that the OCA and the Texas Supreme Court, uh, has said that as far as like jury trials or, or any type of face-to-face trials, uh, they want us to not have those until August 1st, and so, uh, as far as when we say we're gonna open back up the courthouse, uh, take that in a relative term because we're, we're not really gonna get back to what you would consider things as normal. So, you know, don't think if we take action that next week there's gonna be a big jury trial or anything, okay? But what are y'all's feelings as far as, uh, as what we need to do with our local building? You know, we discussed on Friday, I hate to see our other businesses and stuff open back up, and us not do, uh, something. So, do y'all have anything to say?
Judge, I feel like we need, need to go ahead and open the courthouse back up, uh, and again, continue to use best practices we can as far as social distancing and good hygiene, and, and I'm, I'm really pleased to see these counters go up, these glass barriers, and, uh, once Carla gets hers up in there, I believe it's gonna offer as much protection as you can reasonably expect. So, I, I believe we need to look at, and go in and help, and, uh, I think we mentioned, or maybe go and continue to give one door in the door for entry, if that's my opinion, and, and I don't know how everybody else feels about it.
We've talked about the one door because one of the things we thought about doing, of course, we'll post notices at the doors that, you know, if you're sick, don't come in, you know, if you, you've had these conditions, don't come in. The other thing is I've talked to the sheriff, and, and he's willing, the security officers, uh, we can give those, uh, officers thermometers, and if we allow just access, uh, at the basement level here in this courthouse, uh, then they could, uh, take temperatures, and, um, if your temperature is below the range that's required, then that person will be allowed to go up throughout the courthouse to conduct their business. But if for some reason they showed up and had a temperature above that, uh, range, they would be asked to leave, either contact that official by phone or, or online, so. Any other, uh, discussion?
Judge, could I, could I say one more decision?
Uh-huh.
Uh, the governor's order, the way I read it from last week, is the past, he said this is gonna stay in effect till, and last one was June 3rd, which is the day he gave, gave his new order. Uh, this one, his, his latest order, GA 26, is just, is in effect basically indefinitely till he does something else.
There's not a-
Deadline, and so I didn't put in the resolution I gave y'all Friday, I didn't put, I basically set it up like that where y'all could just, it's in effect till y'all do something different. At a time, if you want me to, we could, you know, first meeting in July, or, you know, next meeting in June, or whatever y'all want, just kinda let it ride. It looks to me like the governor's maybe through doing a little adjustments, uh, on a regular basis, maybe till we get some better data, you know, on the, on the cases. So, I'm just gonna point that out to you as well. I can change it however you want, wanna change it.
Okay, all right, thank you. I would say though, like, screens or protective barrier won't be in place, uh, for a little while anyway, and so, I would say we might wanna allow the elected official or department to, uh, count traffic or not until they get that barrier in place, uh, and some of the other protective items. So, uh, limit access until our next meeting on the 22nd, I believe that's right, the 22nd, or that we possibly allow, uh, traffic beginning next Monday, the 15th. We need about a, a few days notice because part of the requirements, uh, in the OCA deal is we'll have to go and put occupancy levels on different building, or different offices, uh, and, you know, of course, a occupancy level two on the elevator and, uh, and, and things like that. So, it's gonna take us, you know, I'm, we're not gonna be able to say, "We're, we're open this afternoon," because we're gonna need, uh, once we decide what we need to do, a little prep time to move in, so. Anyone else have anything to say? With that being said, or not being said, then on a resolution R 20-06-08, uh, you heard the county attorney say that basically the only thing that has changed, uh, is the GA number from 23 to 26, is that correct, Jim?
That's correct.
And so, uh, the governor's, uh, order, our executive order is available, uh, online, and so, uh, and since Hell County, we've adopted the, uh, philosophy that we're going to, uh, accept the requirements that the governor follows. So, do I hear a motion that we adopt, uh, resolution R 20-06-08, and this would replace our previous resolution? I'll make that motion. All right. Motion made by Commissioner Kelly, do I have a second?
Sorry?
Second by Commissioner King. Any, any further discussion about the resolution?
I have a question. So, are we gonna stay closed till the next court, is that, or are you doing it just individually?
I'm, I'm gonna do it, uh, we'll do the resolution, then we'll, we'll make a motion on that or something. All right, so on the resolution, we have a motion made by Commissioner Kelly and, uh, second by Commissioner King. Any discussion about the resolution? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And then our continued discussion or, or what we wanna do locally at the courthouse level, uh, does anyone have a motion they wanna make? Talked about possibly opening up the courthouse or- If we, if we wait and do it the next court date, it'll be the 22nd, if we, uh, do it next week, it'll be the 15th.
Can I ask a question?
Uh-huh.
Or if y'all talked about it, what the entrance is when we do, are you thinking about just still laying the next, or are you opening them all up or?
We're gonna open both of the, the basement entrance, and, uh, the security officers will take temperature of anyone that wants to conduct business throughout the courthouse, and as long as they have a, or do not have the temperature, they'll be allowed to, to go and conduct business. If for some reason they would be above the, the required temperature, then they would be asked to.
Judge, don't you have to ask them the questions, if they've been feeling bad and all that too?
That's, and that's gonna be part of our-
That's why Judge Hugo-
Post and post those at the entry point, uh, and then we'll, I guess we'll have the, the security officers also ask those questions.
Judge, would the 15th give you enough time to post whatever is to be posted and come up with the questions that we're gonna ask?
I believe some, the questions are in place, it's part of Judge Hugo's order to, uh, OCA, so, uh, we'll just have to reproduce those and, and make sure the security officers have those.
If the, if the elected officials are comfortable, or you're comfortable, I, I'd like to see it open up on the 15th myself, Judge.
Okay. Would you put that in the form of a motion?
Sure would, that'd be my motion, Judge.
Okay. So, you've heard a motion that we go ahead and adopt, uh, not really, I don't wanna say open the courthouse because we're still gonna have some requirements, but as far as physical being able to come up and conduct business, uh, beginning on the 15th, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cornell, any, any other discussion?
I have a question. So, but you were talking about the occupancy, like, in each office, you know, like in my office, like, I mean, is that gonna be up to me, county out limit, or?
That would be up to you.
In my counter.
If you put an occupancy level of three people-
Yeah.
Then anyone outside of that would have to wait for somebody else.
Okay. Okay.
Does that need be part of the motion also, Judge, that each elected official decides what the occupancy is in that, in their office?
Okay, uh, so you're gonna add that to your original motion, that we're gonna open the 15th, but each elected official or department head would still have the ability to limit-
Occupancy.
Occupancy numbers in their office.
What about masks, are there, is there any kind of-
We're gonna ask that they, they wear masks. We'll have masks available, uh, if they, if they don't have one, we'll, we'll provide them for them.
Okay.
Any other, uh, discussion? Whoever made this second, who's second? And you're, you're okay with them adding? Okay. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh, I'd like to take before we end, that, that does conclude our agenda. I'd like to thank Jim, uh, for all of his help in carrying this whole process. I've had to read these resolutions, but he's had, he's had to write them, so, uh, like I said, thank you, Jim, and also for the other resolutions that we did today, I appreciate it. All right. Any coming forward tonight? If not, then we'll stand the jury at 10:01 a.m.